And Liz was mad at him. He got mad at me, but he didn't even see it. Cause he said I gave him the chair of hers.
Yes.
Alright, let's have this meeting of the people there, the local agency together. And we have a forum, do you need to call it or can we just look around and say we've got six of us?
There is, there is no determination in anything on how to actually determine we have a forum, so.
Your pleasure.
Yeah, we have a forum. Okay, we don't have any minutes in the last meeting, so we're really into an open discussion and um planning. It also, it's like item three on agenda and also project list for uh the urban renewal project for this coming budget cycle. So really, it's up to us to establish what we want to spend this biennium and the projects we might want to prioritize. Pardon me Chair, um I meant to ask you when you came in, this was the document that I put together, um do you all have this?
We talked about the.
Looks like this. No, not what I sent you, um this document, this is different.
Oh, it's from before.
You remember. But I can make a copy if you want. Mine's a little small, I think I gave you guys eight and a half, would you like to be.
Yes, why don't you do it?
So we have, um just reminding us, um we have a beginning balance of 1.27 million. One million two hundred seventy thousand, um and we had reserved some for the south of the bridge, which we no longer have to reserve, except I don't know if they had to pay back to ODOT.
Came out of there.
Came out of this or not. Um, thank you very much. Um, excuse me Ken, do you remember if the money that we reserved for the south of the bridge project? Um, did the money we had to pay back to ODOT come out of that or do we.
It came out of the general fund.
So we have a full 1.27 million. So, um we have a lot of money. And then we, I mean, I think the, the idea would be determining um how much we want to budget, you know, what are the project lists are? And then how much do you want to budget for this time? Do you want to spend it all on one project? Do you want to spend it on a number of projects? And I don't know if people have, you know, thought about their priorities, um for these.
I have another question. What are the project, what's the projected income figures for the next between Dallas and Sunset? Do you have, do you have that? The projected.
Right, we have, we actually realized we don't have that information, so we reached out to them today.
Okay, cool.
Cause I need it for the vitality. So I can provide that next time.
Yeah, and I, I really like to see you start planning from the sunset date outward, forward. Uh, cause it's not that many years out there we determine, it was twenty twenty nine or something. It's not very far away.
I think it was five years, right?
Yeah, it's not very far away. And any projects we're going to look at are going to be probably multi-year projects.
But once we appropriate from the urban renewal fund to a project, then it's transferred to the general fund? Under, I mean, it's not transferred, but it's earmarked, right?
Well, it's earmarked and my understanding that um in the past, and once you come across something, you really should transfer. So if you say you're going to transfer the money for it, but what happens in the past is that it wouldn't transfer the money until the money is spent. Or soon to be spent. Uh, I prefer not to do it that way. I prefer that if we say we're going to transfer funds because we need it for this particular project, we transfer the funds. Hopefully, if we go forward, we'll be able to get more projects done, um with the, with timing and delays and all that other stuff. But, so right now, it's nothing's, whatever.
Thank you.
So Ken, can I ask you, uh projected income comes from the Lincoln property taxes, that residency or something?
Right, right.
And they're earmarked, you would only assume you're selling it.
Right, I'm assuming, okay.
They're normal percentage. So, do you have one for me too?
And, and, and I actually can simply give that information for it to, for it to be able to see.
Yeah.
I also made it very small, well, not very small, but I can.
No, I think I have the same thing. Did you need it back?
No, I think I just extra got back.
So, um and then also Ken sent around an information from the ORS and then the definition of light, which we can spend it on as well. So, um, did anybody um think about what priority projects? Do I still, why don't you go ahead, do you have any?
Well, one that, that strikes me is the shore of, of the post dam or the hills, so to speak, by the harbor that goes. Uh, we have like steel plates and things like that to keep the landslide from going into the harbor. Um, that's, if, if, if there's such a landslide and it's not secure, it's going to take, it's going to affect um Stone Bridge, um before Stone Bridge, probably all, all of the neighborhoods in between or by harbor. So that would be one of the concerns that I have.
You're not exactly sure.
Were you talking about the north bank and where that dock, it's not a gold, it's a man, I mean that's.
Oh, you mean taller dock?
Yeah, yeah, it's over there. So is that, is it that north bank?
Yeah, that's.
Why do that affect Stone Bridge then?
But sorry, well, I'm just saying, if there's a slide, um who knows where it's going to start? If it's a big slide, if it gets someone's name, it could slide all the way down. Brayden, am I correct on that?
Well, it would affect Bay Street. If, if that, if you're talking north of the harbor, is that what you're talking about? Yeah, that would affect Bay Street, um possibly. I, I know a big section of it fell, um back in late eighties. A section of it fell off in the sidewalk. But, um, it's pretty much solid rock, but what it does is it, it, it takes sections, it kind of fractures off, kind of like what's happening in North Point. It, it doesn't go a slide, like a landslide, it just peels off in a certain manner.
Where is that exactly?
Behind smaller's watch, you know, where the sidewalk fell. So that if, if there is an event there, it, it just kind of caves off in sections, not really a landslide. Like on, like would, like when the trees and things kind of go down a hillside, usually if there's a creek in there, trees all slide down at an angle. That's kind of a sheer cliff made of crumbling rock and, and sandstone. And they, they tend to, with erosion, just kind of chunk off and fall. Kind of like on North Point, it's doing that with arch rock used to be, and it just kind of falls off and.
If I'm in harbor, you look at the sidewalk and it's all green and things like that, I was told that that's the start of the landslide, is that incorrect?
Uh, yeah, like, well, where, where there's the, the, the land is moving is on the south side of the harbor there, it, it's kind of had an angle. It's behind the SCP bed and breakfast and up to Hazelton Avenue. That area has been moving and they noted that, and it's pushing the sea ball out. But the core several years ago, um in the early two thousands, put reinforced steel piling seventy feet down into hard rock about every seventeen feet for a hundred and seventy feet and put these big, huge reinforcement piers in to hold the bank, which it has held, but what's happening now is everything above that has stayed put, the neighborhoods and everything. And that could affect back in the neighborhoods further out like Banker and all that, but it's pretty much stayed put since the piers have put it. But it is affecting the sea ball.
And so Ken or Valerie is experiencing a bit of renewal. Do our projects have to come from plan? Things that have already been identified in plans, right?
I think so. I believe so. I think that if we want to change, we have to make an amendment to the urban renewal. We have to stay within the environment, but I think we just need to make an amendment to that.
Yeah, so if I can, Dick used to, when he was president, he would have like new ideas for the urban renewal projects and then they would kind of have the older stuff, but new stuff too, pretty much every year. And then the, the urban relays to vote on those particular items that were relatively new and we want to put those in. And that we would audit some of the older stuff too, that may not even be usable anymore, and we take those out.
So, do you have any other ideas?
No, that, that was kind of one concern that I had, because I thought that it was going to affect air, harbor areas and neighborhoods, but I'm not.
So you're okay?
Fine, thank you Brayden.
Sure, and I can fill you in someday, we could talk, I can get you a little money, too.
That would be lovely.
I didn't tune in with the last meeting, so I didn't know we had an excitement, but I'll, I'll keep on.
Yeah.
Um, I, yeah, I have a couple of things. So one of them is just on this first page here, the expanding the water plant on Collins Street. So I'm wondering, um, if we could put some money together for like a match, for a grant, to like get the beginning engineering study going on that eventually.
We're currently working on upgrading the filters right now. And possible expansion of like the clarifier and um the reservoir's been refurbished, the new um outfall pipes and the sluice gate that opens and closes and all have been redone. So the reservoir's in good shape, but we do need to adjust the plant itself and get a security fence around it.
A security fence?
Yeah, like a cyclone fence around the plant. It's been, we, we do have one gate, but it doesn't go around the plant, it just, it kind of corners off that reservoir road, but it really doesn't perimeter the plant like the health department wants to see.
So, um, do you have others?
Oh, well, I mean, can, can we use it as a match for grants? Cause the, the grants I have in mind, I would like to get the comprehensive plan also, and we should be looking for a grant to get the comp plan going. And if we could have money from urban renewal as a match. And similarly, urban renewal money as like a match set aside for some of these big infrastructure projects that are many years out, but we have to like start with the studies and, and start moving towards them. That's, that's.
Do you have any, um, things that you wanted to highlight?
Um, not really. When we, when we curved up this urban renewal concept we got then, um, it was pretty much targeted toward making improvements at the harbor. The wrong way, making it more pedestrian friendly. Can't say that I'd want to go on a stroll by the sliding open up these days, but that was, we had thought about how cool it would be to be able to just walk all, you know, basically around as much of the harbor as you could. So the harbor was kind of the focus. That and infrastructure. Which I, I totally support the water plant.
Yeah, I like, I like the water plant and then the one that's referred to or the water is one, two, three, four, five, six down. This is Highway one oh one, it's upgrade eight inch water line, west side of highway from bridge to South Point Street. That, um, so, uh, in water, on the front page, it's six, one, two, three, four, five, six. Upgrade water line. So currently, um, there is an older six and eight inch AC line, which is asbestos concrete that's currently in there, that should be removed. And, well, actually you don't remove it, you leave it and you just replace, uh, the line. You can, there's ways of bursting through the old line.
Not AC, you don't want to touch that stuff.
No, but you can pipe burst through AC, you don't dig it up, it just stays in the ground and they pull a new line through the, the old.
Excuse me, I wanted to get, um, Rick's note before.
Thanks, thanks for that. Um, my only thoughts are this, um, the, uh, water and sewer. Everything else on the rest, I, I, I don't care about. And that's only because I've heard Brady talk about these asbestos lines. And, uh, if that would be, we'll move forward, I'd love to see some checkmarks beside some of these. And I will defer to Brady, of course, uh, asking what his recommend, if he could put a, a list together of must-do items. And, uh, and we can.
So, um, I'm trying to ask Brady another question. Um, Chair, lifespan of the AC is about fifty years, current?
Yeah, they're gonna possibly have a federal mandate to remove all AC pipe by twenty thirty something.
Yeah, I thought that was coming.
Yeah, so.
And you can identify which is the oldest.
Yes, and that, the, the one on the highway is the old, we haven't placed Coast Avenue, we need to do Williams Avenue.
Brad?
Yeah.
I was just thinking of something that Valerie said about how this was a reserve for the harbor. And that 1.27 would go far closing the gap that we have on, I don't know.
If we don't get the grants, you mean?
Yeah, if we don't get the grants and, uh, there was the application that you just submitted for the year one, the Russian year one, that's what we referred to.
Yeah.
Just from what I've heard, that's going to be a tough, a tough one. So.
We're, we're possibly.
I don't believe it. Nick, could you, um, mute your phone, please?
Oh, wow.
Union ticket.
Oh, interesting.
Yeah, hopefully that'll.
Nick, could you mute your phone, please?
Cause I'm going to tell you, I, I wanted, I would like to get that signed.
We can do it soon. Yes.
Please, no worries.
Yeah, I can, I can by next week, yeah, I can answer.
And my, my apologies, we, we did say that right now we did get year one through these. So we, we haven't had a chance to do the ABC spectrum, but we'll, uh, we'll, we'll, and that's been scary, huh Brady? So we'll, uh, so we'll, we'll make a focus to do this one Friday.
Great, that'd be great. Do you have something else?
Oh, I just wanted to bring attention also to the Bay Street project. I, I'd really like to see some, um, safer pedestrian access along Bay Street or Bayview, excuse me, Bayview.
Yeah, Bay, Bay, Bayview, kind of the same.
So that's the third one down under street.
Yeah.
And, and we already have money going in for a sidewalk, right, to cross it, so that could tie it up.
Crosswalks, uh, but yeah, there's always been talk of creating a, if not a paved, but a sidewalk area, if, if paved would be the better way to go with asphalt. Um, specifically at the pedestrian area, maybe on the harbor side.
So what I was thinking, um, I was on a Zoom call, I think you all got invited from Wyden's office about all this. Um, build back, um, better in, um, the bill funding, bipartisan infrastructure, law. There is so much federal money and, um, if we had a prioritized list, whether it be from urban renewal or whatever, um, and we could get our, and whatever status and a lot of the money, there's Department of Transportation money, there's, uh, Corps of Engineer money, there's, um, Department of Commerce and Department of Interior money that really would go far. And the Department of Transportation funds, um, actually have, in all these funds, have rural set-asides, um, not set as, well, they do have set-asides, rural disadvantaged communities and also rural communities. I don't, I didn't look at the de, the definition of disadvantage, but, um, which because of the poverty level might be, but they certainly have. So I think whatever list we have and what are the priorities we put together, if we don't fund it for urban renewal or we use it as match, as Lindsay says, we just, we really, if we get our heads together about what our priorities are as a council, um, I think that would go a long ways. Now that we have an engineer on board, they could do the preliminary designs, you know? And I think in some of these things, we already have, uh, I, like Brady has a list of areas where he knows those things. And I don't know what the design element that would be if it's just a, a build, you know, you might not need it. So I think that would go far, having a prioritized list. But going back to, um, Rick's comments on this funding to meet our harbor, have we gotten the permits or are all the permits in place now for the project?
Uh, no, they're still in the process. We're still waiting to find out from the Army Corps after this last evaluation around if it is section four oh eight.
Okay, so do, do we have a projected timeline for that?
I know, it kind of goes at the place, the core lines, so.
And do we know where the, that, at E R, where, that would just, when we, we hear from that, from the, um, either the.
The Z D S, the, well, I'm afraid I have some bad news on that.
What?
We heard from Sophia, who's the, the jan working with Mercury's office, and she said that after they reviewed it, they don't feel it fits, they, there's something we're lacking to fit under the Army Corps. So she wants to transfer us to this other, uh, fund. However, it's going to be hard to get because there's a lot more applied for it. And what she needs from us is to give her some kind of statement about how fixing the harbor would help flow to moderate income.
Yeah, so that's, that's probably what I'm talking about, there's a lot of funding earmarked for rural, so I can work with you on that.
Okay, I, I asked her what she, what they need. Do they need a parent, do they need support, I wonder if they need, but I haven't heard that from yet. I'm just, I'm just citing a little. And then I kind of.
Okay, yeah, I just spoke, or just emailed with Katie Jacobson, because there is an economic study for Lincoln County. And, um, they last updated it in two thousand thirteen, before that was two thousand and three. And I learned from her that they've already commissioned that, but that won't be available for us. And we can use whatever data we have. But I'm going back to this idea about, um, whether or not, to begin with, we should earmark and how long should we earmark this 1.27 for the harbor project if we want to get that finished? I mean, that might be, yeah. And what that means is that we still can go on with our prioritization. And I just don't know how to deal with it, again, according to you Ken. Um, how we deal with that within the budget? If we earmark it all for harbor, just in case we need it to finish the harbor project, then what happens to our other projects if somehow that missing money comes through earmarks or through different funds?
What would we be doing is either, depending on the percent of what the changes to the final budget, we would either be doing appropriation resolutions or supplemental with the hearing. So it really depends. So it's not, it's not, it's just, it could take, it's, it could be a process, but it's not.
Okay, so we shouldn't have to worry about that so much. So it seems to me that, um, when would, I'm sorry, when does the build date for the harbor, just so you get all the permits? It would be this summer, right?
Uh, they would, if we get out of permits and everything, we probably wouldn't even be going out to bid until this fall, I would imagine. Assuming that we know the rest financially. Um, or even January, which I'm told is the best time to go get construction bids. So we may, depending on when we get all it settled, we just don't know yet, but with the in-law work, they would be starting until fall. And I think we're too tight to meet all to be twenty three. So we've been estimating twenty.
Wow, so that ties up this money for a long time if we're, if we're doing that. So, but I guess we just can sit, can continue our prioritization. So, um, you know, my feeling, I guess I haven't expressed mine, is, um, I support, you know, this infrastructure emphasis, but I really believe that there is infrastructure money everywhere right now. So I would rather myself not use urban renewal and that and use it for things that we otherwise would have trouble getting. Like I, I've always wanted to improve the, the accessibility of how, of the sidewalk, and it's in here.
Yeah.
Um, on the west side of one oh one, um.
Sunset to Wheel Park?
Sunset to Wheel Park, but it has to go, where's the second? Where's that?
Like the second to last one, the second.
Right, but it has to go beyond that, like in front of the bank, in front, it's, it's awful. You couldn't get a stroller, you could get a wheelchair. You couldn't get people that, you know, are having, uh, site mobility or site issues. I mean, it's really dangerous and there's utility poles in the middle of this, of the sidewalk. So to me, that would be hard to get funding for. And I know we have to work with ODOT, but, and there might be ODOT funds right now also within this, because they have funding now, and I don't know if there's a match or not. And the other thing I would really like, that property that's north of Title Race, I really want to acquire that. Because other than that, it's going to be a four-story condo and it should be part of our park system, it's vulnerable. We might be able to get FEMA funds because it's in a, you know, real bad tsunami zone and they'd have to do a lot. So those would be my two priorities is pedestrian, safety, accessibility and getting that property into our park system.
Is that already probably in the parks, I think, point two.
I'm not sure, but that's the one we had money in hand, we got to turn it down. So, um, what we have to do this time is be willing to say we really want it. And if we can't come to an agreement, we'll just, you know, it's not popular, but we'll just do eminent domain. And, you know, that seems like a bad word, but if we don't get it, I mean, I think our future generations, it's like, why didn't you buy that property when you could have? I mean, it's, it's, to me.
I'm, I'm sorry, Fran, which property is it?
It's the one with Langston, with the Langston property.
Oh, the, the, yeah, okay, right, for you to do that.
Yeah, so. South, excuse, South of Title Race. So that should just, so that to me would be my, one of my priorities for the money too. So those, those two priorities, pedestrian, I think acquiring that, then for parks.
So the, the sidewalk thing on the west side of one oh one, is that ODOT property? Can we make improvements on ODOT property?
Yeah, we have to get their permission and permitting and, and abide by their engineering approval.
Yeah, they don't, they always say, you need our permission, you need our blessing, but you have to do it.
Did you say what Langston? Did you say what Langston?
I think we had 1.3 million in hand and he turned it down, he thought we should, we should pay him two million.
That's coming here.
Yeah, nineteen ninety nine, maybe two thousand. But, um, nobody's using the house now and, um, I'm willing to give him a call and talk to him. But, um, her to talk to him, I talk to him, the world's like, well, who named the park after you? Yeah, I thought it.
Want to add one thing to this discussion about grants, there's nothing that I disagree with ever here tonight. I love that property, I love that idea. That would be a wonderful addition. And I agree with you, there's lots of money around, I, I remember this meeting, now I actually flipped something out of the Oregonian, about twenty seven billion in, you know, available through EPA. You're, you're right, there's more money floating around right now. The problem that we are running into as a town is a reluctance to give us money. We've already, you know, you mentioned some nice grant sources, but then I heard Liz Martin say one day, well, we can't get that Department of Agriculture grant because we don't have our other stuff.
That's not.
Yeah, yeah, and I, I saw that the C P A has been hired now, so we should be getting that together.
Okay, well, I, 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 I'm hopeful for that then. And that is, you know, before we can do anything, we have to have that done.
Yeah. Yeah, everybody's disagreeing. So, um, where next? I guess, um, I would suggest, I mean, and we also have, there's another pocket that we can make available for grants that we're not talking about. If we want, you know, for provided properties and allow people to apply, but I think the town is looking pretty good. Yeah, most of it right now, so, but that's another thing that's not on here. But maybe, um, you know, Adam hasn't had a chance to really look at this, maybe we should all go through here and mark, first of all, add the ones that we, like you had Joyce, that's not on here, or other people say, and then we'll have Brady's and, um, you know, priorities. And then next time, we'll have one, two, three, four, five, and we can, or we can send it ahead of time and collate it. Okay, four of us think that this is the highest priority and, but, uh, let's actually, let's confirm this, I just said this, but I'm not sure it's true. Are we willing to take the full amount that we have, not including the projected income, and earmark that in this budget year? Are we willing to take the full amount that we have, not including the projected income, and earmark that in this budget here? Like a harbor, just in case, the dock build out?
Yes.
Does everybody think that? You're okay with that? So I think we have to do that.
It's a worst case scenario, though, I think it's the last.
Last, yeah, I think that's, yeah, and can we um, I mean, I don't think. I think so too, but if not, well, we have it at least, but we don't want anybody to say, oh, it's in your budget, therefore, we don't need that money.
Yeah, we encourage, excuse me, but it would encourage bidders to know that that money is there.
Yeah, that's true.
Yeah, you were saying we can't even move forward until money is there, right?
Right, there's a challenge to moving forward, we may not get the bids we want or the bidders we want if they don't think there's any money, you know, on the project.
Did you wanna speak, Kim, about any priorities you had at this point, or you wanna come up with your list for Brady?
Well, I've come up with my list, but my focus really is pretty much the same as Brady's, um addressing the infrastructure. It's a big, huge deal because we constantly deal with broken equipment and things like that, and we need to do that. I also agree that goes in the sidewalks and all that, our priority too. I mean, we're a destiny driven town, um we wanna try to make that case possible.
So the other thing, okay, so I think we have a decision, maybe we can just capture in the notes, that um we will earmark for full amount of urban renewal for the uh our restoration project as a last resort. And um and then we'll prioritize and then also, maybe if you can get, you and Kim can get the list before a meeting so you can work it into your own priorities, do you agree, don't you agree, and I think we're not gonna disagree with you, but.
And then the other thing I wanted to know is.
Pardon me, Tim, before we do this, could we go ahead and do the motion and second to earmark that on just.
Oh, we need a motion.
Let's do it more formally now, I'm ready for this, cause it's it's a huge deal.
Okay, anybody wanna make that motion?
Still moved.
Oh, Joyce will second, yeah. Did you get that, Kim, or do you want it? Okay, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any votes? Yes, thank you. So then the other thing is, and I don't know if this is possible, but when, I'm I'm assuming you're gonna put together a list like this. And I I don't know about the cost thing, but I'm wondering if we could have a a column that says eligible for transportation, whatever it's called, TRT funds. You know, so because then we can balance, it's like, maybe we don't need to take it from urban renewal. Is there a benefit or is there a detriment for taking it urban renewal? Do you know what I'm saying? That might be something that might give us some more information too. So that that would be good.
Okay, yes, I think some of those sidewalk projects are already on that original.
TRTC, okay. Did you have that thought?
Well, thank you, I did it. I didn't know whether to bring it up now or not, but it has to do with this this motion that was just passed. And I just think this marks it a wonderful opportunity to invest in the harbor. And at the same time, it sends a signal that, you know, we're in total support of that harbor and what goes on down there. But it's, now is the time to bring it in up to date in every respect, including all the fees, all the mortgages. And we, if we can erase that four or five hundred thousand dollar a year deficit by doing that, we'll be able to put that money into these other projects.
Yeah.
So that's my only thought.
Yeah, that's a good thought, and we'll soon see the declarations of the harbor commission, I think on their least initial. But once this harbor is done, I think we have to bring everything up to statewide comparability. Okay. So is there anything else we should just discuss now?
Next meeting.
Like next meeting, so by next meeting, we all have work to be done, it's like, take this and rank it. But I think one, four, the top four, top, top five, and then once we see Brady and Kim's list, we can adjust ours. But I think it's helpful just to have our own thoughts on which priority, cause we're always being swayed by Brady, but.
I'll I'll try to identify the older, oldest water mains we have.
Yeah.
Maybe not so much age as this one is in worse shape.
Yeah, one looks fixing worse.
Right, I'm just like Collins is, yeah, hard.
Yeah, we're fixing Collins quite often.
Do you, council, do you wanna close that window, is that creating pollen for you?
I don't think so.
Okay.
So the other um issue, um when I was reading, I think what Kim sent out, is, you know, what other towns have done about like undergrounding of utility lines and stuff. And I don't think it's gonna be a priority so much, but if we are gonna dig up Collins or we're gonna dig up Williams, that's the opportunity. It's expensive, but we really need to, and it's safer, you know, all these utility poles now are causing sparks and fires and and under earthquakes, so when we dig up something, I mean, that's the time to do it.
Yeah, you're right, so when you're putting a water main in, it's easier to just write off to the side. Cause sewer, you can put sewer or water with with power and telecom and stuff like that, you just can't have sewer water too close. But absolutely, when you put a water main in, like we did Coast Avenue, we put conduit in along with the contractor, putting large four inch schedule eight, which is a thick plastic conduit along the water for future stuff. And they already have used that pole for telecom.
Can you do it for utility uh for high voltage?
Yeah, we would, we would meet with the, so is is say if we do have design plans to do, say, Williams Avenue, for example. Yeah, then we would get a PUD and they would wanna schedule eight, either four, five, six inch line buried, uh not in the same ditch, but alongside water main for future power, and then there would be sweeps in certain areas where they would have transformers.
Yeah, that I think um we should work into any of our, you know, what other things can we do that meets some of our city goals of beautification or whatever as part of any of these plans. And it would be cost effective, so.
Yeah.
So that might be nice.
That's true, I, we were going to, moving forward with the um South of the Bridge project, I remember one of the um updates were to put underground conduit in, it was a quarter of a million dollars just for the conduit itself being installed in the ground, I mean, the iron, so it's a, it's it's a big savings if you do that. Rather than just have them put in literally in place as a as a secondary project.
Yeah, that would be good. So um I think for next meeting, we'll have our priorities, we'll have Brady's list and then um I think what the priority list will also tell us is where we might need our engineer, presuming that we're gonna go out for grant money. I mean, I'm assuming we're gonna get money for the harbor, so we're gonna really want within, cause these these bill and infrastructure actors like money for five years, so as soon as we can get at least, I mean, all we need is preliminary engineering plans. It doesn't, doesn't even have to be, I mean, some, at least for the technical assistance grants or to to flush them out. We do need, you know, hundred eighty, you know, linear feet here and this and the sidewalk, whatever, and stuff. So that's, so maybe next time we can, once we establish our priorities, then we can say, you know, see if the engineer can help us do whatever we need to move that forward. So um.
I have a question.
Sure.
So after looking at this list, definitely my priorities would be the sidewalks and crosswalks. But um the one that's improved crosswalks at Bay Street, is that just the one that goes along the highway in the Bay Street? Or is that included?
Um it's it's actually down by the um parking lot to the county hall stairs.
Well, there isn't.
There's not.
Yeah, that was.
So it's not improved, but uh.
Yeah, it, yeah, it was part of.
I think that was already funded though.
It was, it it was part of, we had monies for striping all of the parking lot. And then those bumpers and then cross uh a crosswalk painting to go to the stairwell.
So is that happening or?
Yeah, we're we're actually gonna try to tie it in, we have to repaint the uh behind the Bay Street parking behind the spotty horn. We're gonna steel coat that and repeat the stripes, cause they're very um off offset. And when we do that, we could have the striker do that crosswalk. And then maybe up up um highlight the pedestrian little fog line, kind of like, but it's kind of a pedestrian walkway.
The the parking behind the spotty horns, spotty horns though.
No, it's not.
No, it's ours, it's.
Some of it is?
Fifty feet of it.
Yeah, some of it is.
From the fish motor wall there, they're building, fifty feet is the spotty horse. But all that beyond there to the top of the hill, across from the barhouse asleep.
And that's one of the projects we discussed with our city engineer to come and do a survey, so we know exactly what our property line is. Because, you know, with some current concerns about fencing and some protesting any kind of neighbor just.
Yeah.
Yeah.
Then we'll know exactly where the lines are, so that one is.
So you, what, you had another question?
Yeah, so does that pedestrians use the stair signs to look that used to be there, that directs people to move over?
Yeah.
Because how.
It is, it says please use stairs, and then there's ones that's a stairwell, but you're, I did see a baby buggy, because they can't go upstairs, she was walking right down the bar glass, a baby.
I see that, I've seen that too since I've been here, but I've also seen people without baby buggies, just people walking with a dog.
My dog cannot walk upstairs anymore, so I'm one of the ones on that. So um the next, we decide, all the questions?
Yeah.
Um so the next meeting, let's just hold it again before the next city council meeting.
Okay.
And um that's all I'm ready for.
April fourth?
April fourth, good, at five PM. I'm gonna have a break. Thank you guys.
Thank you.
So quick question, the first item on your streets, that's already been done, right, outside germ?
Do we need a, east side?
Yes, we're adjourned.
Do you say the east side of our city limits?
Are you asking official question?
Oh, no, no.
Oh, okay, we're done.
On the east side of.
Uh, I'm just tired of the place, with those, uh, houses, they, jailhouses?
They put, they put one block of sidewalk here right there, but this is probably the.